Today and listening to these two candidates due to the timely passing of Councilman Joe Taylor last, right at the end of last year. This special election is, you know, being called on March 28th to fill his vacant seat. Right now, it's a critical time for this city as we continue to move forward and ensure that we have a safe, livable, and workable environment to foster growth, jobs, competitive tax structure, and continuous development for the future. I'm Taylor Ockman, I'm with the Central Carolina Realtors, one of the sponsors for today's forum. We have a membership of a little over thirty-three hundred Realtors across the Midlands. And we do things like interview candidates, and we've interviewed both of these candidates. Definitely both great individuals. So looking forward to you, looking forward to hearing them today. Also want to thank Sabrina Bass and Catherine Flynn from the League of Women Voter Voters who are assisting us today with the forum. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Sabrina to begin the forum.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Welcome, on behalf of the Columbia Area League of Women Voters, I am Sabrina Bass. And as Taylor said, I will be the moderator for this particular forum. The league is a nonpartisan organization interested in helping to educate the voters about the candidates as they prepare to vote on or before March 28th in this special election of the Columbia City Council Member for District Four. So we're going to have questions that were developed by the Columbia Chamber and the Central Carolina Realtor Association. Association. Questions from the audience have been collected on those cards that were distributed at the front desk. These questions will be asked as time permits. Both candidates have also been asked to give two-minute opening and closing statement. I, as the moderator, will ask all the questions. Candidates will be available after the forum to answer individual questions. I will introduce the candidates and then briefly review the rules of this forum. Our candidates are Peter Brown and Beatrice King. So here are the rules. The candidates are seated, as you can see, Beatrice King and Peter Brown. In the interest of fairness, we will rotate the candidates to provide an opportunity for each to go first and answer any question. This means we will begin with Beatrice King, followed by Peter Brown for the first question. Each candidate will be allowed to respond to every question. A two-minute time limit on each answer will be strictly, I repeat, strictly enforced. As previously introduced Cynthia Flynn, who sits in the front here, from the Columbia League of Women Voters, will help the candidates keep track of their time. I encourage the candidates to watch Cynthia, because when she puts the stop sign on, please believe that means to stop. And your two minutes are up. Candidates will not be allowed to interrupt one another while answering the question. There will be no inappropriate language, name-calling, etc. will not be allowed. No time is allowed for rebuttals, so we will not be doing those. And if you want to say something in response to someone else has stated, then just know that will be taken away from your two minutes on your question that you have. Candidates can make clarification during the time allotted to them for the answering of the question. So at this time, I will pause to allow the candidates to introduce themselves, starting with Miss Beatrice King, followed by Peter Brown. And based on the direction, you have two minutes as part of your opening.
All right. Good afternoon. I'm Beatrice King, and I am a native of Martinique. I have moved here to Columbia from Paris thirty-three years ago to come to USC and attend the Masters in International Program known as MIBs, which I completed in nineteen ninety-two. I worked in the corporate world for a while, and then I met my husband, George. We, I put my corporate career on hold to raise my three boys. And all three are, we're empty nesters, but I just found out that they come back. But we have really enjoyed an incredible, incredible quality of life here. In twenty-twelve, I ran because there was an unexpected vacancy on the Russian One School Board, and somebody needed to step forward and do the hard work on school boards. So I ran for school board, and I served for ten years. I stepped off in November, deciding to spend more time with my family. And I actually was really honored that Mayor Rick Man honored my service by giving me the keys to the city, which happened at the greenhouse over there. And so the reason why I'm running for city council is because I really, really believe that Columbia is a great, great place to live, learn, work, and play. I love this city. Like I said, I chose to move here. I stayed here. I am a perfect example of what we are trying to accomplish here in attracting people and retaining professionals. I was instantly attracted to the friendliness of the people and all the wonderful qualities of Columbia, and particularly the quality of life.
Thank you.
That was amazing. Right at two minutes. So I'm Peter Brown. I actually was born in West Columbia, but grew up in Columbia above, on Bates Park. I'm the youngest of eight. So my siblings are a generation apart from me, the older ones. I went to St. Joseph's in Cardinal Newman High School, and then I went to Notre Dame for college. Came back and worked for our family business for about six months and realized that I wanted to do something different. So I ended up moving to Greenwood and worked for Milliken and Company in Abbeville for about four years. During that time, my family business, my family's business, was sold. Dad and his partner, Mr. Gant, sold it to a private equity group. And they worked out a deal that made it probably easier than it should have been to close the business. So in nineteen ninety, they closed Colite Industry, or at that time it was called the Colite Sign Group. So my brother Marty was the only Brown that stayed with the company. And I was actually looking to move back to Columbia. It's funny, one of the reasons that we restarted the business was because I couldn't find a job in Columbia at the time. So we restarted our family business in nineteen ninety-two with about $4,000. We currently are a global sign manufacturer, just like we were back in the day. We do work in about eighty countries a year. Probably every other hotel sign that you see in the United States of America is made by Colite, along with others. And I think part of this, the reason that I chose to run was I just think I offer a unique skill set from my involvement in the community, which I've been on numerous boards at a local, state, and national level. I think that I just bring a certain ability to offer some business, common sense, and a different way of looking at things. So I think I can make a difference, and I think I can make Columbia a better place.
Thank you so much. So we'll start with Mr. Brown, and then follow by Miss King. What are your top priorities for the city? How will you address these priorities? And what is your timeline for accomplishing these opportunities? Again, I repeat, what are your two priorities for the city? How will you address these priorities? And what is your timeline for accomplishing these opportunities?
So I really think the number, the two things that I hear most are public safety and people really resonate with running the city like a business. And part of, you know, public safety is obvious, but maybe not as obvious as people think. We do have a shortage of police officers, as well as fire, but there's also, there's more to it than just that. So I think, you know, we have to take a more comprehensive look of why we have these shortcomings. And we can't do what the hospitals did for twenty years, which is steal, you know, people from each hospital. So we don't want to steal people from Richland, Lexington County as well. We've got to really look at a comprehensive approach to public safety. When I talk about running the city like a business, you know, the two most important things in any business are its customers and its employees. That's what makes a business, okay? Not making money, not, not, you know, treating people poorly. It's about treating people with respect. So I think I want to take a different approach with the city. I appreciate everybody that works there, but I also appreciate the hundred and forty thousand citizens in the city of Columbia. And I want to improve their quality of life. And I want to make their life better, and I want to listen to them, and I want to work to find common ground, because I think common ground is everywhere in Columbia. And I think for too long, we've tried to split each other up into neighborhood groups and factions. So I think there's a lot of, a lot of common ground out there. And I think that the mayor's done a really good job of developing this vibe that's in Columbia right now. And I think we can kind of work off of that. There's plenty of things to do. And of course, you know, we're fulfilling the term, so we've got two and a half years to do it. So I think those are really the two most important things to me as far as my candidacy.
Thank you. Miss King?
Thank you. So I have three priorities. One, number one, is public safety. Number two is economic development. And number three is the quality of life and protecting our neighborhoods. So public safety, you know, I really believe that wherever you live, you should feel safe. You should feel safe in your house. You should feel safe in your neighborhoods. You should feel safe when you go shopping at a mall. And you should feel safe when you go out to dinner at night. I really believe that businesses also should feel that they can trust that Columbia has the infrastructure to allow them to operate their businesses in a safe environment. About a year and a half ago, we talked about having fifty-five vacancies on the police department. Those are boots on the ground that are absolutely essential. Now we have eighty-five. We're going the wrong direction. And while I applaud council for taking some good, good initiatives with the police departments in pay increase and incentives, and also giving them more resources to update their equipment, there is much more to be done. Economic development is at the top because, is also a priority because we have a really narrow tax base here in Columbia for a lot of different reasons that I can go into a little bit later. But certainly, especially when it comes to you guys, I know for serving on the school board for ten years, you know, I fought for your dollars. I fought for fiscal accountability, and that's what we're talking about. We need to attract businesses so that the burden is spread more and so businesses don't feel choked up. So, and of course neighborhoods, I'll elaborate later.
Thank you. Our next question from Miss King would be, economic development is critical. Sorry. Economic development is a critical opportunity in the city. Where do you see the biggest opportunity to bring more businesses and jobs to Columbia? And how will you move this effort forward? I will repeat it again. Economic development is a critical opportunity in the city. Where do you see the biggest opportunity to bring more businesses and jobs to Columbia? And how will you move this effort forward?
All right. So let me, let me continue on the economic development. The bottom line is that I really think that Columbia needs to grow its tax base. And let me tell you how, I mean, why and how we do it. One, as you know, our current tax base is really small because roughly maybe a little less than two-thirds of the properties in Columbia don't pay taxes. Why? Because they're either government, like Ford Jackson, or school districts, and they don't pay taxes, or they're nonprofits. We have a lot of churches. We have a number of hospitals, and we have a number of universities, and they don't pay taxes. What that means is that the tax burden really falls on a small commercial base, you. And much of it are small businesses. So the remedy, in my opinion, is that the city needs to make it easier to do business here. Eliminate or reduce red tape. I wholeheartedly support the business-friendly initiatives that council adopted. And we need to identify other areas where we can make it easier to do business here. And then I also believe that the city needs to help existing businesses expand. They're already here. They're established. And so we need to help them grow their businesses. One great example is, we have a lot of restaurants here. And we can certainly help some restaurants if they want to expand into a second or third location. Those are areas that council has control over and can help.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
So I think when it comes to economic development, we can't, we have to really concentrate on the tax structure. So the real chicken isn't economic development, it's the tax structure. So if you really look at the problem we have in Columbia is unless you're owner-occupied, you're at a significant financial burden. So if you drive around here, when you leave here tonight, just drive around this area. It's really downtown. I mean, this is the downtown area of the city. And what you'll see is owner-occupied, non-owner-occupied, empty. Non-owner-occupied, empty. Then you'll see nonprofit, nonprofit, church, church, church. That's Columbia. That's because of the tax structure. So if you don't live and work in your own building, it's not conducive. I bought a building from down on Lady Street at Ben Arnold. It's worth less down than it was ten years ago and harder to rent. Okay? No place else can say that. So we have to work on the tax modernization or reform, and then economic development's got to come behind that. As a manufacturer, I pay even higher tax rates. So I start off every year at my business with about a $400,000 property tax bill. If I didn't want to be in Richland County, I wouldn't be in Richland County. I would be in Lexington County, or Fairfield County, or Calhoun County. You have to make it so people want to invest here, not only the people who insist on being here. Yeah, we, Joe Taylor and I were, served on the Jobs Economic Development Authority together twenty years ago. And I still remember Joe at a meeting said, "If only I had been afforded the opportunity to move to South Carolina versus being born here, I could have gotten a tax break." And that's the problem is we've made it so hard to develop business here. We've got to make it easier. I agree with Beatrice. We got reform all along the way from permitting to assigning project managers to people who want to grow.
Thank you so much.
Well, she's right. She was really good.
So wait, you finish, and he was saying, "I agree with Beatrice." Is that right?
No. That's off the table now.
Mr. Brown, the next question starts with you. What do you view as Columbia's most significant challenge to growing commercial investment? And how will you address the challenge? Again, I repeat it. What do you view as Columbia's most significant challenge to growing commercial investment? And how will you address the challenge?
Well, I think it's basically what we were just talking about, is really the tax structure. And, you know, there's, there's going to be this, this clamoring that we can't do certain things. Columbia's been a town of no for a long time, not a town of yes. And part of that no is, I think, again, going back to the concept that, that we've tended to divide our people up into different, different areas and neighborhoods and factions that only look out for themselves. As part of Columbia's, and my goal will be to really tie into what Daniel's saying, we want to one Columbia. Part of this oneness has to be working together to solve our problems. I also think that the homeless situation, and specifically in downtown, is a real detriment to, not just the safety of people, but to the economic development. I mean, it makes it really hard when, when you don't feel safe and you're afraid to go downtown at night. I mean, we have to address these issues. They all come back to quality of life and feeling safe and making, making Columbia the kind of place that we want it to be. Not excuses of why we can't be that place, but making Columbia the place we want it to be.
All right. Thank you. Miss King?
Well, you know, I think that Columbia has so many great things going for it. And sure, there are challenges, and there are challenges that other cities experience as well. Certainly, you know, the homeless situation, or taxes, or challenges with, with economic development. But we do have a lot of really, really good things going on for ourselves, and we need to tell our stories. When I moved here thirty-three years ago, Columbia didn't, did not look like it does today. Okay? There is a major change in Columbia. I think that there is a good momentum right now to address some fundamental issues. Some of those are certainly the taxes. We have to find a way to reduce taxes to lessen the burden on mostly people like you. That's what I talked on school board for ten years. So I've been in the trenches. I sounded like a broken record. I was looking at ways to reduce expenses. I've been there and done that. I think that there are businesses that, that open here. We need to ask them why they've opened here, what they, what are the good things that are happening here? But certainly, the taxes is probably one of the, one of the toughest issue to tackle. And later on, maybe we'll, we'll get to address the tax modernization plan. But that's certainly probably the toughest issue from an economic development standpoint.
Thank you so much. And on that note, your first question would be, city has usually begun to work on tax modernization. So to address the cost of taxes in the city for business owners, what steps will you take to make Columbia a more competitive place to do business? I repeat, the city has officially begun to work on tax modernization programs to address the cost of taxes in the city for business owners. What steps will you take to make Columbia a more competitive place to do business?
So then again, just to reiterate what I said earlier, I believe that we really need to work on finding very creative ways to reduce taxes, to reduce the burden on just commercial entities. Again, two-thirds of the properties don't pay taxes. We have also lower valuations, which means that our revenues are then lower. And then we have, and this is my area of expertise, we have a high military deriving from the school district. And that falls on you, and just you. The operating portion of the school district, that burden is only carried by you. Commercial entities, rentals, second homes, and just commercial operations. Homeowners do not carry that. They only carry the debt portion of the school district, which means capital improvements and bond resolutions and bond referendums. So we definitely need to tackle that. Now, you know, I looked at the tax modernization plan, which I believe was definitely Joe Taylor's baby. And it's, 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 I was not part of the plan, I will tell you that much. I was not part of the development of the plan. But I read it. And it gathers a lot of data. There's a lot of it. And it identifies areas of opportunities, and I think that it's really well-intentioned, and it has merit. But the tricky part, you see, is that it doesn't just depend on city council, but on multiple local agencies and the legislature to buy into it, and it'll have a cost on them. So that's where my school board experience will really help on this, on this front.
Thank you.
So the tax modernization is really about just leveling the playing field between owner-occupied and non-owner-occupied. It's really what it boils down to, if you want to make it as simplistic as possible. So part of this is, is making it where people want to invest in here. In today's world, you know, a hundred years ago, people invested in their own business and in their own property. Well, today, what we want to do, development is really based upon math. Okay? So one of the reasons we don't have certain things here is because if you take a major national retailer or developer or whatever, they can develop anywhere, whether that's Tulsa, or Austin, Texas, or Raleigh-Durham. And Columbia doesn't fit the math model because of the tax structure. So you have to fix this first. I really think it goes back to, again, to the common ground that we can find with Richland County, city of Columbia, and working together. Everybody knows this isn't sustainable. And even though, you're right, Columbia, when I was growing up, we had three restaurants in Columbia. You know, if we went out to dinner, we went to Quincy's. So, so it has come a long way. Problem is, the rest of the world's gone double. So on the bell curve of life, we're nowhere close to everybody else's bell curve. I mean, I read it every day, LinkedIn, you know, Raleigh-Durham, more people moving to Raleigh-Durham, more people moving to Charleston, more people moving to Greenville, more people moving to Rock Hill. We can't even, I mean, it used to be, at least you could explain it back in the day. Well, we're not Charleston, and we're not Greenville. Now we got to say we're not Rock Hill. I mean, this is insane. I mean, we can't even compare ourselves to Rock Hill. So, so part of this is, it really is, it's a, it's a, it's a fix. And I believe that that fix is going to happen. I think it's, it's, the time is now. And with, with working together and creative solutions, I'm one-hundred percent confident we're going to make it happen.
Thank you so much. So, Mr. Brown? The city, am I right? Yes, I'm right. The city has officially begun to work, uh, that's it. The city is working on a plan to increase the number of affordable housing units in the city. What are your thoughts on the city's role in this regard?
I think the city's got to lead when it comes to affordable housing. I mean, we have to also recognize, again, we have some built-in challenges on affordable housing. Columbia's a renter market, okay? More than fifty percent of the houses in Columbia are rentals, all right? Well, that's, that's, if you want to look at affordable housing, you got to look at affordable rental market, okay? And then we got to go back to, guess what? The tax structure. Okay? So it all, it's all this, it's a circle, it's a circle of, of issues that all tie together. And that's, that's the way you have to approach it. It's really part of, of a master issue that we've got to work on. So, so we take the rentals out, and we talk about other solutions to affordability. And yeah, I think the city's got to lead. I think we've got, some of the projects that I already know about on hand are, I think, great projects. So we got to look at affordable housing. But we got to look at the tax structure again, and then we've got to look at how we can do more private-public partnerships. The city owns too much stuff. The city lays out too much money. If you can do public-private partnerships, the money goes a longer way than it does if you got to be in charge of everything. The city's got to work with other areas and other groups in order to make this happen. Okay? I know there's a huge void right now in affordable housing. Again, with the right leadership, the right partnerships, and working together, I think, I think we can make the progress that we need to in this city.
Thank you so much. Miss King?
Thank you. Well, I definitely fundamentally believe that everyone should be able to own or rent a house that they can afford to live in. The things that drive costs the most for households are housing, education, and healthcare. Okay? So on council, we can actually do something about housing. We can analyze the needs, and we can bring in partners that are experts and can, can help us grow the, the market segments that we're, we're lacking on. It's been a, it's been a big issue, even on, you know, on school board, I was looking at that because we had a lot in, in the district. We had a lot of wealth, and we had a lot of poverty. And that middle segment just was not represented. And so those families were in Richland Two, because Richland Two, in, in those areas, had a much better vision in, in building affordable housing. And what I mean by affordable housing is just that, is that you are able to find a house and housing that you can afford. So it's all ranges and all price points. The city worked a lot on initiatives and giving student housing incentives. I think it is past time that it focuses also on, on that affordable, meaning attainable, housing. And we have the means to do that.
Thank you. The question next is, what is your thought on how the city should manage short-term rental property? What are your thoughts on how the city should manage short-term rental property, starting with you, Miss King?
All right. Very well. So Airbnb and the likes are here, and they're here to stay. They're working very well for families that come and visit. They come for graduations at USC and, and Ford Jackson. They come to enjoy a weekend of football or basketball. Look, I've stayed in Airbnb in other cities, and I've enjoyed them. They work. But I think that we need to figure out how that economy and system can work here in Columbia. And here's how. Other cities, in some cases... Other cities, in some cases, have jumped into aggressive regulatory systems, while others have taken a more passive approach. I want to focus and take more of a data-informed approach. Currently, STRs don't have to have business licenses, nor any registrations with the city. So we're really unable to track them and know who they are and how many there are. I don't think that we should rush to decisions about imposing strong rules and regulations on an issue that we're just starting to understand. And I think that we need to do this incrementally and thoughtfully. So I really look forward to continuing the good work that council has already put in this and in convening realtors like you and neighborhood people and look at solutions, issues and solutions.
Mr. Brown?
Well, fortunately or unfortunately, I'm on record with an op-ed in the Columbia Star on short-term rentals. And it was really interesting, the feedback I got. Personally, I think this falls into a couple typical Columbia situations. Number one, making problems where there aren't, and we have other problems we could focus on. Number two is the overregulation that Columbia has chosen to adopt over time. We have more rules than just about anybody. And the problem with rules are, you have to do what? You gotta enforce them. Okay, so guess what that takes? More people, more oversight, more this, more that. And then we also know that it divides the neighborhoods up, and it divides people against each other. I haven't seen anything that makes me feel like, of all the things on my list that I should be working on, I have no information that says short-term rentals is a problem in Columbia. And I was pretty clear about that. I think it's, again, trying to make something to try to make a handful of people in Columbia happy. We've chosen to do that over and over and over. Unless the chief of police sends a letter and says that if we don't do something with the crime associated with short-term rentals, we're gonna have a problem. Okay, so when he sends that letter, then I think I'll be willing to look into it more than we are now. Columbia is a rental market, period. It is a rental market with 54% of the houses in Columbia are rentals. And I guarantee, the Airbnb next to you probably looks a lot better than the rental next to you. Okay, because if it doesn't look good, guess what you can do? Put people in it. I think it serves a tremendous benefit to our community. The young people love it. That's what people are gonna start doing. And the more rules we make to drive people away, the less people we're gonna have here. We're gonna get the exact opposite of what we're trying to do.
Thank you so much. All right, so Mr. Brown. The next question is, recently, the city implemented the rapid shelter program and enhanced services to address homelessness in the city. What are your thoughts on this situation? I repeat, again, recently, the city implemented the rapid shelter program and enhanced services to address homelessness in the city. What are your thoughts on this situation?
Well, once again, I'm on record with several op-eds on homelessness. So I strongly advise you to Google the op-eds I wrote for the Columbia Star. Also got extremely positive feedback on both of those, or maybe those more, that might have been three. I think what we've done in Columbia is we've institutionalized homelessness. Somewhere along the way, I mean, it's not arguable that it's worse now than it was 10 years ago. We've put more money, resources, effort into this issue, and it's worse now than ever. And I think part of it is, we lost concepts of what we were trying to accomplish. Okay, and what we're trying to accomplish is having less homeless people on the streets. And somehow, we've got more people on the street. And it's less safe now than it was 10 years ago. So as far as the rapid shelter, I think that's been a huge success. I know some people are, again, there's some vocal people against it. I think it was a really necessary first step. I think we gotta really dig deep. And again, I wanna find common ground and figure out where the money's going, who are the providers, what are they doing with the money, what are their purpose, and how we can then, again, work together to try to solve this issue. I think one of the things we wanna have to look at is, maybe it makes more sense to put some money towards keeping people in their house and keeping them from being homeless than it does for continuing to just throw money at a problem that ends up making it worse. So again, part of the concept of business is looking at things differently. We don't run our business the same as we did 30 years ago. We run it completely different. We had to reinvent ourselves over and over and over in the way we approach things and the way we do things. And I think we need a really different comprehensive approach to the homeless situation.
Thank you so much. Mrs. King?
Thank you. You know, there is something that Peter and I have in common. We're both people of faith. We're both Catholic. How often do you get that in Southern Belt, right? But we're both people of faith, and our faith teaches us to take care of the homeless. I believe that Columbia is a caring and compassionate city and community. I'm running on public safety, economic development, protection of neighborhoods, and quality of life. And homelessness affects every component of those. It affects how safe you feel about your place and whether businesses want to move here or not. So we have a temporary solution and temporary fix with those rapid shelters. Fifty of them, and you can same them for a max of 90 days. So these rapid shelters, I think, are a good start, and I'm glad that council took the initiative. And that's an initial step while we figure out long-term solutions. Because the point is, the hard thing is not how to get the homeless into the pods. The hard thing is how do we get them out of the pods and place them in long-term housing solutions? That's, in my opinion, how we solve the problem, and it comes back to housing.
Thank you so much. Our next question is, how will you work with our local school district to improve the quality of education for the benefits of teachers, students, and the community? I repeat, how will you work with our local school district to improve the quality of education for the benefit of the teachers, students, and the community? Mrs. King?
Well, 10 years plus the future, right? I was, served on the Riston One School Board for 10 years, as I've already told you. It is, our children are our most precious assets. And guess what? They are your future workforce. And it is every person's responsibility to make sure that the school district and the leadership prepares our children to be productive citizens at the end of high school, to either get into the workforce, the military, or go to college. I know everyone on school board. We've had some pretty big powwows. But at the end of the day, we've all agreed that we would focus on issues. I think that we need to really have, the city needs to have a conversation, an ongoing conversation with the school board. I think that a lot of times, the district is not understood as well as it should in the massive effort that it takes to educate children and prepare them for tomorrow. We all want to have really, really state-of-the-art schools with the latest technology and the best curriculums. We wanna also have some great athletic facilities, and all that costs money. I think that there is a big conversation to be had with the school district, an ongoing conversation. And I think I'm really, really well-equipped to do that, knowing the challenges of the school district and also knowing where we can cut expenses. Because remember, that's what I did for 10 years on your behalf in protecting your taxpayer dollars and bringing issues of fiscal responsibility and transparency.
Thank you.
I think I have a pretty good background when it comes to this. Pam and I have four daughters. Our preferred method of education is Catholic school. And two of our daughters graduated from Carter Newman. One of our daughters went to AC Flor, and we currently have a 10th grader at Sand Hills. So I think we've kinda gotten the whole feel for education in the Midlands. As far as the public school in Riston One and Riston Two, I think, again, the key is, one of the keys, I think, is this. Having a forum like this, Beatrice and I were talking about before we got started, how a lot of this on the school board is kind of invisible to most people. And it's your biggest tax, most of your money goes to schools, and nobody seems to care about it. I think it also circles back around to working together with county council, the city, you know, and even the university, just to look at the different ways we do things. I've also been a big supporter of our most recent elected superintendent of education. I think we have to look at charter schools. I think we also have to look at choice. I think we have to look at letting you go to the school you want to. So within the district, and even outside the district. So again, I think you just gotta take a really different approach. We've gotta work together with the school boards. And, but at the same time, I think we have to look at different ways. In my mind, the customer is the parent and the student. And so I'm always gonna err on the side of the student and the parent. Because I think that's the, they're the most important ones, not on the side of the district.
Thank you. This is your question, Mr. Brown. How do you view the city's investment on projects like River of Lions and Bull Street?
So obviously, the city's gotta lead when it comes to these different types of projects. Traditionally, we've been all over the place on projects. And we always, our new favorite project is the one that hasn't been started, and the one we hate the most is the one we had to finish up. So I totally believe that we've got to really concentrate where are we making our investment. And we have to be strategic in this, you know? We don't have the tax base to just do everything at once like we want to. Personally, I wasn't a big fan of Bull Street. It cost us way too much money for the investment. And all we did was drag a bunch of people out of the Vista and relocate them over to Bull Street District. And we've got a ball field. So, you know, for $120 million, that doesn't really seem like a good deal to me. It's there. I think it's actually kind of fragmented our city a little bit. I think we gotta work to grow these areas. I also think that, you know, that area really has to be focused on. You know, with Elmwood, Main Street, North Main Corridor, Elmwood's got a lot of potential. But I think there's some serious challenges in that area that we're gonna have to deal with. So I think we need to invest and finish the projects that we've started. I actually went to Washington DC with the mayor, Joe Taylor, James Bennett, and I. We visited all of our congressional delegation up there. And again, working together and putting our priorities for the city and to find this common ground that we can develop Columbia very, very strategically for the next five, 10, 15, 20 years.
Thank you so much. Mrs. King?
Well, the city has a reputation of starting stuff and just not seeing it through. And some of those investments, you know, just reflect that. I do believe that it's really important that once we make a decision, we stick with it, and we see it through. I do have concerns about the growth model in Columbia. I think it's, just like Peter said, it's been very fragmented. The traditional approach of commercial is to actually have a uniform growth where you can link different projects. And when Bull Street was initially brought up, I think the concern for a lot of people was that it was not connected to anyone. It was not connected to Main Street, it wasn't connected to the Vista. And I think the vision was to really finish Main Street and then slowly start connecting Main Street with the Vista and eventually the river. That's an asset that we haven't talked about that would be absolutely phenomenal to develop. So, you know, once on council, I certainly would want to have those conversations. And definitely, just like Peter was saying, we need to finish what we start. But then we need to be very, very strategic in the growth and listen to the experts.
Thank you so much, Mrs. King. Thank you all both for your answers to the questions that you provided, and we're about to wrap up now. So, for your final question, what thoughts would you like to leave the voters with on why you would be the best candidate for Columbia City Council? So for your final question, what thoughts would you like to leave the voters with on why you would be the best candidate for the Columbia City Council? And remember, we have people on Facebook too. Mrs. King?
All right, well, thank you for having us. I think that, you know, neither of us expected to be here, right, and run this race. And while no one can fill Joe Taylor's shoes, someone must fill this seat. I love this city. I chose this city. I moved here from Paris, France, not Ireland. I've lived, I've lived in and visited many places. And I'm here to tell you that Columbia is a great, great place to live, learn, work, and play. We've got amazing people, y'all. The hospitality just itself sells this city. We have abundant natural assets, and we have a wonderful quality of life. I want Columbia to earn its rightful reputation as one of the greatest cities to live, learn, work, and play. Y'all will repeat that with me, I promise you, at some point. But, you know, I want my sons, all three of them, to want to be here and raise their families here. And guess what? I want the same thing for your children and grandchildren. You know my record from serving on school board for 10 years, fighting for your tax dollars, transparency, fiscal accountability, and high standards. As your councilwoman, I'll work hard for you, and you can count on me. I'm available, and I am accessible. I have the time. My phone number is 803-413-5511.
All right, Mr. Brown. Those that need a number, see you afterwards. Go ahead.
Should I give you a last second to give your phone number up?
It was covered somehow.
All right, so, like Beatrice, I consider myself lucky to be the living Columbia. In fact, I went way out of my way to come back here. And my family's here. I'm always gonna be here no matter what. I've done, I've always been part of the community, I've always served on boards, I've done it all here. So I also think I have the business experience of running a global company. And I think that's helped me really be able to be a problem solver. And part of today's world is, we have to look at the math and the data, and then the common sense comes after that. So the approach that I wanna take is a holistic approach, but also a very different approach to the way we always look at whatever our issues are. I do wanna bring us together. I think this is the one time in my life that there's momentum from the city, the county, and the university to work together to make Columbia better for everybody. Too many times, somebody had to be a winner, and somebody had to be a loser. And I don't even wanna tell you who the loser was, okay? If you haven't figured it out by now, you probably shouldn't. So I'm gonna work really hard. I think this is a great time for me, my wife, we've got four daughters, like Beatrice. I want my kids to be here. My oldest daughter, Ashley, lives in Santa Monica, California, and works for Warner Brothers Discovery. She's not gonna get that job here. My second daughter runs a, or our second daughter runs an art gallery in Beaver Creek, Colorado. She can't get in here. So we've gotta change that. We want everybody to have the opportunities here that exist elsewhere. And that's what I'm gonna work on, and I wanna work as hard as I possibly can to make Columbia the best city that's not Columbia. the best city in South Carolina.
Thank you so very much. Would you all join me in celebrating these two individuals who are giving this...